...guidance or standing for existing neighborhood small area plans, nor for the comprehensive plan values that include preservation. This is not a growth with preservation strategy. The amendment upends and prematurely undercuts any opportunity for a balanced policy decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, good evening. Jeff Wright. I live at 178 Banks Street Southeast. It's the Lord Square Town Home Development. Been there about four years. I've been a city resident for 38 years. I've owned five houses in a variety of different neighborhoods. I love the city. I care about it. I'm not here to complain. But I want to at least address my personal objection to this amendment. At the risk of repeating what Ron and others have said, 800 units per acre seems ludicrous and a dramatic and unwarranted jump in density. Those of us who live in that part of the city are not against reasonable development. We like what's happening now, apparently what's happening at the NICE site, as opposed to what was going to be happening, an incredibly out-of-scale and out-of-historic norm type of monstrosity. It looks like we're going to have something reasonable in the eight- or nine-story range. I hope that's true. It is a historic district. It is a low-to-mid-rise district. Opening up the opportunity for giant high-rise buildings in what is a historic and low-rise neighborhood seems crazy. Again, we're not against reasonable development. Who knows what the unintended consequences are of throwing that many people into that smaller footprint? Traffic, environmental, crime. We don't know, and I don't think anybody knows. And I think that slowing this process down and taking a more thoughtful approach instead of a railroading approach is probably warranted. I'm not against density per se, but there does seem to be a density-at-all-costs, density, you know, quality-of-life thrown at the altar of density for the sake of density. And I don't quite know why massive, high, super-ultra-high density is in and of itself a goal. So those people who've lived in this part of the city for a long time, Ron's been there nine years, didn't move there to move into 40 and 50 and 112-story high-rise units. Not that we can control everything that's happening and our quality of life isn't, you know, we're in a community, but I think some balance is warranted, given what I think is kind of a shocking proposal in this amendment. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker. Please state your name and address.
My name is Nathan Duggan, and my wife and five-year-old daughter and I reside at 110 Banks Street in southeast Minneapolis. Thank you Chairman Brown for the opportunity to speak tonight to the committee. As a resident of the Nicolet Island East Bank neighborhood, I am writing today, or speaking today, excuse me, to express my opposition to this proposed amendment related to very high density. And I specifically would like to call out a paragraph in Ms. Mays's memo to the City Planning Commission to you all on December the 10th, 2015, where she stated the following: Quote, "This amendment is not an attempt to revisit the full scope of guidance for densities and land use features that will be undertaken as part of the full comprehensive plan update, which will be underway soon. The intent is to have a fairly minor amendment at present to address current issues in the near term with a more comprehensive review to come. As a result of this, it has been determined that the inconsistency in the comprehensive plan needs to be addressed. If this is not remedied, it could create, as others have stated, an administrative burden for development projects that the city would otherwise support." Following are just some of the comments and concerns that I have about this overreach from my perspective. I am deeply concerned and opposed to this getting out in front of the comprehensive review process. And with all due respect, this is far more than an inconsistency of language. This is about fundamentally remaking established neighborhoods and creating, quite frankly, what I would call a boondoggle for developers. I'm not exactly sure how this can be classified as a fairly minor amendment when you're proposing a shift of 200 development units per acre to 800 development units per acre, as currently defined in these activity growth centers, which, many of which are established neighborhoods and in some cases, as already has previously been stated, historically designated neighborhoods. I don't know what issues are so pressing that they need to be addressed in the, quote, "near term," nor do I know what administrative burden for development projects this could create for the city if this is not modified immediately ahead of the comprehensive plan update. And to my knowledge, none, and I mean none of the neighborhood associations or residents of the neighborhoods that will be significantly impacted by this amendment had to have, have had any opportunity to discuss or debate this proposed amendment. And again, as to reiterate, I'm not sure what issues related to historic, or what about issues related to historic preservation, neighborhood livability. This amendment would significantly impact both. It would appear this proposal is singularly focused on issues related to density and population goals for the city, and to that end, creating an easier path for developers who want to build very high-density projects with little regard or even disregard for current residents. Exhibit A is the NICE project. While Neve and the city were initially supportive of this project, the neighborhood was in strong opposition and played a major role in the current shift from 30 stories to a six-story project, a height en massing that is much more appropriate for the St. Anthony Falls Historic District. You suggest also, Ms. Mays, doesn't her memo, that the city is missing out on multiple opportunities to develop projects of this scope. However, given the recent proposed United Properties Tower on the Nicolet Hotel Block, that it was recently reduced in scope, I find it hard to believe that there is a backlog of very high-density projects that would warrant passing this proposed amendment. I would encourage the Planning Commission to table this amendment and look at it more comprehensive and let the neighborhoods debate it as they should be doing from this day forward. Thank you for your opportunity.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please. Go ahead, and please state your name and address for the record.
Chair Brown and members of the commission, thanks for this opportunity to comment. I'm Jan Warlock. I'm Director of Local Government and Community Relations for the University of Minnesota Twin Cities Campus from the Office of the President. I want to say that it's a great advantage to the University of Minnesota to have the heart of our campus in this vibrant city and in this thriving metropolitan area. The four of the activity centers that are under consideration in the proposal are in the university campus area communities. And though our campus is part of what's designated as a growth center in the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan, the market demand for new high-density development will not be a result of enrollment growth at the Twin Cities Campus of the University of Minnesota. Excuse me. The level of enrollment at our campus has been fairly flat for the last several years, and significant growth is not anticipated in the foreseeable future. But having said that, I understand, we understand, that the communities near campus are attractive places for residential, commercial, and industrial growth. In the last few years, the city has permitted the development of over 1,000 new housing units in the campus area, making it, I think, the second-fastest area for residential growth in the city after downtown. I may have that wrong, and I hope Hyla corrects me if I am. But while the population is growing, the public infrastructure has not kept up. With several thousand new residents in Dinkytown, Stadium Village, and on the West Bank, there has not been a commensurate increase in public safety resources that are allocated to this area. The University of Minnesota has a significant commitment to public safety. We maintain a police department at this campus with 50 licensed officers. Actually, we're at 48 today. We're going to 50. The jurisdiction for the University of Minnesota Police is the campus, but more than one-third of the incidents to which the University of Minnesota Police respond are from the communities off-campus. We ask that, as the city considers a change to the comprehensive plan that would allow extra-high-density residential development, that there be a commensurate commitment to increase public safety services where the cumulative population growth is outstripping the police resources. We have great personnel in the second precinct and in the first precinct Minneapolis Police Department. In the second precinct, they are scrambling to keep up with the need for public safety services in northeast and southeast Minneapolis. But we have commercial nodes that would be, that are part of these activity centers, where the character of those areas has changed a great deal over the last 10 years, becoming increasingly entertainment centers and places where there are lots of licenses to operate till 3:00 a.m. And then you add on that several hundred new residents in each of those places, and it significantly changes the character. So it's good to be in a growth center, but we need the public infrastructure for public safety and a good quality of life. Thanks for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you. And next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Victor Gramch. I live at 132 Banks Street Southeast, a neighbor of a lot of my colleagues over at Lord Square. And I'm here to speak in favor of the amendment. And I always like to try and move things to numeric basis, because we've heard a lot of commentary, and unfortunately, you're not going to be, I have copies here if you wanted to see this, is that basically, there's a lot of comment about 800, as though every building is going to be 800 dwelling units per acre. I think, as I tabulated here, the existing buildings in the neighborhood, they range in, 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 per acre, the highest, Larive, okay, at 265, which would, of course, would be illegal under the current, I'm not sure how Larive got approved. And the next highest one is Pinnacle Falls, both very tall buildings in the Historic District, and at 157. But on average, we have only 74 residents or dwelling units per acre. And if you take the population of, the census says that the average residence per dwelling unit is 2.25 in 2015 estimate, and if you look at our neighborhood, Nikla East Bank, it's 1.75. So I kind of took a split and said, if we assume there are two people per unit, which actually is a little bit high in the neighborhood in the current demographic, that would be, you know, 1,400 residents, okay? And if you look and say, if you, if you, so you'd have 147 residents per acre, so this is not, even though it has some very tall buildings in the Historic District, which have basically nothing to do with the Historic District, that, even if you look at all of the rental units and everything else, it's still only 74 units, sort of, per acre at that density. And if you look at the new developments that are being proposed, there's three that are actually at least opposed. One is the Alatus Tower, which of course is actually lower density than Larive, at 263 per acre. Superior Plating is actually relatively low. It's only 74 per acre because it's a five-acre site and there's only 280 units of housing on it. And US Bank Mortenson is 257, which again is about a 28- or 29-story building, at least in this current proposal. So all in all, and then these new projects, I think are more typical of what we would seize, the idea that if this is raised to 800, that somehow or another, every building is going to be 100 stories tall, is simply, simply not true. There are market realities in what you can do. It's also worth pointing, with regard to city resources, is that the current condominiums in Nikla East Bank pay a little over $4.5 million in 2014. Decent estimate, according to the Assessment Department, after talking to these things, is the new developments would pay $6.5 million. So if there are demands on city services, on police services, there's resources to pay for those, and that's what the resources should be done for. So I think that the current limit actually is restrictive, although 800 is pretty far out of line. But I think, I think that no building in our neighborhood is going to be built to that size. I would like to make a couple other comments. Ron Bontine wasn't here at the time, but when Cobalt was proposed, all of the things that are being said now about density were said about Cobalt, all of them. It's too big, it's too glassy, it's too everything. And both the developer and the association persevered, and it's a nice building, and the people who live there love it. And I think that's true of new buildings. I think it's going to be. The second thing is, is it's worth pointing out that Ron said that, well, new buildings shouldn't interfere with views of the river. Well, Winslow House, Larive, and Pinnacle Falls completely dominate the view of the river from the neighborhood side, okay? And that they're, and that they were all approved somehow or another by the HBC back in 1980s. And so I think that this, this actually makes things more consistent so that we can deal with developers on a reasonable basis as the neighborhood goes forward. I'd also just make a note that I think that density is the crucial, it's the hallmark, it's the foundation on which you build sustainability. Our neighborhood has 800 buses a day that will cross the Hennepin Avenue and Central Avenue bridges to all points of the compass. We're within walking distance of practically everything that's within, worth walking to in Minneapolis. We have a, we have a thriving, or a budding and increasingly thriving retail district where you can walk to things. Putting more people where they're in a position to do that is the foundation on which we're going to have a sustainable growth in Minneapolis and live lightly on the environment. So I encourage you to pass this amendment. Thank you. By the way, I would like to emphasize, I'm here in my personal capacity, not as I usually am as President of Nikla East Bank Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Katie Bell, and I am at 629 Jefferson Street Northeast, in the, standing at the East neighborhood with my husband. And I'm here to sort of express that I also have concerns about density, which, right now, living in Ward III and in Minneapolis, can feel a little bit like you've got kind of a small voice. So I appreciate you all being here and having this at pretty easy hours to get off work, because this is my first council meeting, and I'm excited to be here. So I would say I'm a classic urbanite. I, you know, I live a mile, two miles outside of my workplace downtown, so I walk there. It feels a little unsafe on a bike going through the downtown itself, although I certainly bike a lot. I did 200-mile bike rides this summer, and I both bike to the ice cream store and bike for sports. And I also own a car, and so does my husband. Because it's, you know, especially as a woman in town, you just don't always feel safe, you know, having a good time enjoying the amenities of the city after a certain time after dark. And I think, you know, a lot of people I know, you know, I'd say, probably even in the high-density things, they own a car, they might have a place to park it that's appropriate, but people bring cars into town when they live here. And so I have concerns about this whole density thing in Minneapolis, especially with how choked off the east side is by natural and man-made features. We've got on the west and south sides, the Mississippi River, and the bridges are the choke points. We've got railroads going every which way. We've got the University of Minnesota, which is just kind of built the way it is. We've got I-35 on the east. And so the idea of putting more people in a place where you really can't get very many more people in and out of it at any given time seems a little questionable. And similarly, the infrastructure, water, parking, you know, because people do have parties and restaurants do attract visitors from the suburbs where it costs town. Hey, this is the best place in town. And I go to the Loring Pasta Bar all the time, you know, and I'm, I know a lot of people from the suburbs do too. And so, and similar, I, basically, I mean, Elliott Park, I think, is a good example of where I don't want to live. That's fine if you do, but it's not what I see the East Bank as being for. The East Bank to me seems more like an urban neighborhood, which I saw in the fine print of the North Loop's Small Area Plan. The multimillion-dollar condos by the West River Road got to be called Urban Neighborhood or something like that. And I feel like that's at stake here, and there's a lot of places that do have that urban neighborhood feel. I'm not, I don't feel safe riding a bike down Portland. I know it's a big bike boulevard, and people do, but it's also, when I think of it, I think of newspaper reports of people dying on a bike. I'd like to not see that happen in these places that are more spacious and easy to feel like are a neighborhood. I'm also concerned about the way sort of old skyscraper condos degrade, and big commercial developments can degrade faster than smaller-density things. When my mom moved to town, she ended up moving half a block down the road from us, also into a duplex. But she was looking at condos, and it was striking the difference between some of the 30-, 40-year-old condo skyscrapers and like the brand-new ones, and just this sense that it, I mean, they were fine, but this sense that slowly people were starting to lose interest in them, and I don't think that happens with a 30-year-old house, a 60-year-old house, 100-year-old house, or even some of them just more moderate, easier to rehab as a whole kinds of buildings that we have. And I think even, you know, just newer, smaller condos are going to hold their structural interest to the people who live there and stay maintained as a whole. And I would hate to see the neighborhood devalue as just its building's value, because we just put in too many things that the developers turned over and left the landlords and the people of the neighborhood to deal with the devaluation of. So yeah, I guess that was everything I had in my notes. So thank you so much. I'd really hate to see the east side just become overcrowded and impossible to live in when, right now, it's very livable.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yes, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jacob Fry. I'm the city council member for the third ward, and I live at 316 East Hennepin, right in the, in the neighborhood of where the majority of speakers have hailed from today. So right now, we have an overarching debate in our city about the value of density versus the value of the status quo and remaining where we are right now. And I just want to make very, very clear that this particular text amendment has nothing to do with the proposed developments that are presently going up. We had talked earlier about perhaps proposing this, this text amendment at the time when the NICE development was a controversial development, and we decided, no, to hold it back. Well, now there's another development that's on the way, and if we withhold it again, then there will likely be another development down the road. And here's the point where I believe there's, there's quite a bit of misinformation. Regardless of whether this text amendment is, goes through and is approved, there are still the mechanisms to oppose and completely oppose any of the developments that are now underway. We have a zoning code. They would have to go through, we'll use the Alatus development, for example. The Alatus development, which is at the Washburn-McGreevy parcel, would have to go through a very significant variance, and I believe they would also need a conditional use permit. All of the arguments that people in the audience are presently making today, and rightfully so, can be made at a subsequent occasion when the developer requests a false, any form of variance. The text amendment, on the other hand, it was brought to me to deal with inconsistencies that we had between our comprehensive plan as well as our zoning code. In our zoning code, and our code, generally speaking, at the city, we are now operating very much off of floor-area ratios, whereas this has a number of units per acre. Now, the number 800, which I know a lot of people have been focused on, is very much so an arbitrary number. We could say 700, 600, 500, 400, we could say 300. But again, none of that would change the underlying question, which is whether this particular developer or that particular developer should get a variance within our zoning code. So I don't feel that I should be here today, nor do I think it would be proper to either advocate nor oppose for this particular text amendment. But what I do want to say is that one thing has nothing to do with the other. There have been a series of developments just in the last few years that went beyond what would be considered very high-density by the comprehensive plan, just to read through a couple of them. Stone Arch Apartments, Two Loring Park Apartment, Nigon Fifth, Soul Line City Apartments, which was the revamp of a historical structure, 600 Fifth Street North, City Place Lofts, Forum Arc, 301 Washington Apartments, and Corner Apartments. Not to mention Larive and Falls Pinnacle, which are in the Nicolet Island East Bank neighborhood, which always, already go beyond the present comprehensive plan. No matter what we do with this comprehensive plan, there are additional safeguards in place by which anyone in this audience or out in the general public can oppose a development figure. This, this is to reduce inconsistencies that we presently have. This is to eliminate the administrative burden for both our staff as well as private investments, and this is to create a really more streamlined process on the whole by which people can advocate or oppose any of the developments into the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Hung Russell. I live at 612 Fourth Street Southeast, which is in the Marcy Homes neighborhood. I was a member of the Marcy Homes Master Plan Update Steering Committee in 2012, or 13, excuse me. I'm also currently the co-chair of the Marcy Homes Land Use and Development Committee, as well as a member of the Board of Directors. I'm not here to speak in that capacity. The Neighborhood Association has not taken a formal stance on this particular issue, so I'm speaking personally. I would echo a number of the concerns that were stated by the earlier speakers, but I wanted to speak specifically about the inclusion of Dinkytown on the list in this amendment. Just last week, the Heritage Preservation Commission had a kickoff meeting with the outside consultants to start the whole design guidelines process for the Commercial Historic District in Dinkytown. And I sat in on that, and I just found it a little bit discombobulating to hear a discussion, very thoughtful discussion among the commissioners about the design guidelines and how it would speak to scale and bulk in regards to how the guidelines themselves would be crafted, knowing that this event was coming along. So it was the proverbial 800 dwelling unit gorilla in the room while this whole discussion was happening. And so I went back to my experience of sitting with the Steering Committee for the master plan and how we were watching what was happening within Dinkytown, which, as part of Marcy Homes, our residents are pretty sensitive to the whole issue of density in our neighborhood, because, of course, many people know, it's seen some of the greatest growth within the city. And at the time that we were starting to form some of the language for the master plan, a lot of these developments were encroaching into the boundaries of Dinkytown. And so it really kind of spurred this urgency to come up with some way to provide some sort of preservation designation, or to help stem some of the development and save some of the character of that area. So in looking at what has been achieved in that time and where we're at in terms of a springboard moving forward with guidelines, we're trying to see how this amendment really jives with that, how does it reconcile with that. And there's some great concerns. And the fact that it's listed specifically on the list of these activity areas that would be most impacted, that's where I think there needs to be more thought, but perhaps even taking it off that list for further study rather than having it highlighted as a particular area to be included. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next speaker.
Thank you. I'm Kristina Idi-Tolleson, 1316 Fourth Street Southeast. I'm the owner of the bookhouse in Dinkytown and coordinator for Preserve Historic Dinkytown. And I'm here to speak, to follow up especially on what Hung said, about the challenge of including the, these activity centers specifically in this amendment. I have nothing but praise and amazement that the staff of the city has actually managed to get small area plans done for all of these growth areas and activity centers in the last three to five to seven years. And I think it's a tremendous resource for the city and also represents investments, which we in the neighborhoods have also made. I've spent the last three years on one task force or another working with Hyla, Steering Committee for the Dinkytown Small Area Plan and Marcy Homes. So anyway, we've done a lot of work too, but, and they're, and they're, these are significant investments in trying to clarify and create plans and descriptions of these areas that allow us to do the kind of careful, thoughtful development in these areas that benefits all of the city. I went back to the old, old county plan, Minneapolis County Plan, to try to get a little more clarity about the history of the activity centers and the growth areas, because I was kind of confounded by the fact that they're all sort of thrown in together in, in this particular amendment, and found that really the activity, the activity centers and the growth areas do have slightly different purposes and slightly different characters. And it's not a mistake that many of the activity centers, which, many of which are also great streets areas for the city. The city also gave Dinkytown a Great Streets grant. Again, these are, these are wonderful investments. That those activity centers are these sort of special-character areas of the city that attract people and whose development and of special-character areas of the city that attract people and whose development and thoughtful preservation and enhancement is an asset to the city as a whole. And so I would be very, and I also don't think that necessarily that there's any clarity that's created by this conflation of growth areas, of activity centers. It has the potential to increase the vagueness and perhaps even create administrative burdens for developers who have, under this particular amendment, a pretty wide-open field without a lot more guidance. And we don't want people to be investing either in project development or properties where they're going to be shot down. You know, I think that considering a connection, tighter connection between the small area plans and the density planning is really important. So I would like to see if I share the concerns about this timing of all of this procedurally in terms of policy. But if the city were to create an upward density in a amendment like this, I would strongly urge that you consider removing the reference to specific activity centers and say something about activity centers in or near growth centers in accordance with the guidance of the small area plans. I've been searching and searching for some kind of tie between, that gives the city staff and the citizens a little better handle on how these things can relate, because there just isn't right now. And that's one of my major concerns. So I think that about does it. I do want to reflect on something that Jan Moralek, who's our community relations person, said about growth can outstrip.